Perfect. Good evening, everyone. I would like to call the Springfield City Council work session to order with roll call, please.
Counselor Dane Gordon. Counselor Mo.
Here.
Counselor-elect Rodley.
Here.
Here.
Counselor Woodrow.
Here.
And Counselor Pictionary.
I'm here, thank you. Let's go on with our first subject, which is the fiscal year 2022 Community Development Block Grant Program with Erin. Hi, Field.
Good evening, Council. Happy New Year. So I'm here tonight to share the proposed public process for allocating federal community development block grant, or CDBG funds for fiscal year 2022, and to receive any feedback you have or answer any questions. I'll just point out, I did schedule this for 15 minutes, so we don't need to use the whole hour. And I'll add that the process we're proposing tonight is similar to the process you have chosen in previous years. So, to back up, as a reminder, CDBG funds are federal dollars that the city receives on an annual basis to address housing homelessness and community development needs. The funds can be used toward a variety of activities, but must meet federal requirements of the program and primarily benefit low-income households in Springfield. In order to receive CDBG funds, Springfield and Eugene must develop a regional strategic five-year plan to identify needs in our community and set priorities to address those needs. Not that long ago, in May of 2020, you did just that, and the council adopted the most recent consolidated plan, which we are now using to guide our annual allocation process until 2025. So this fiscal year 2022 one-year action plan, sort of summarized in Attachment 2 of your packet, is to allocate CDBG funding for activities beginning July 1 of 2021. So staff estimate right now, having available $705,000. We'll be waiting on final word, though, from HUD, which may not occur until March or April, on what our final allocation will be. I'll just note that the proposed plan is sort of in two parts. One, to continue to support existing programs that you have supported in the past, and then to make the remaining funds available to the public and nonprofits through a request for proposals process. And this is what's outlined in the council briefing memo. And I'll just say, there's one correction to the memo in the table. The estimated dollar available for the RFP process is supposed to read $403,250. It's correct in Attachment 2, it's correct in the narrative, but in the council briefing memo, we missed an edit, so. So yeah, so to summarize those existing programs proposed, thank you, AJ, if that's you. This is great. This page is great. So the existing programs we're supporting, be supporting is the home repair program. You'll see that meets the consolidated plan strategy number two. That is a program where grants are used to help fund urgent repairs for low-income households in our community. And in recent years, those have primarily been seniors on fixed incomes and go to repairs like a leaking roof, failed heat system, plumbing needs, as well as accessibility improvements to our house, such as a ramp. The other program you have funded and we are proposing continuing to fund is the contribution to the Human Services Commission. This is an intergovernmental commission for Lane County, which Springfield, Eugene, and Lane County electeds, as well as budget committee members, make decisions on how to allocate local, state, federal funds to support the needs of homeless persons and special needs populations. And then the final set proposed allocation is just at the bottom there toward staffing costs to administer this grant. That gives the remaining about $403,000 to be put into the RFP to see what comes in through that process. The timeline for this process is such, and maybe I'll see if the spirit hands operating this maybe could move up for the timeline, but our goal is to release the request for proposals in January to make it available for two months for people to submit, people nonprofits to submit proposals. At the same time, we would release the one-year action plan to the public for public comment. This would coalesce, perfect, this would coalesce in April, where the city's own Community Development Advisory Committee would meet, hold a public hearing for the public to comment on the draft, as well as evaluate the request for proposal applications and make a recommendation to council for funding. As with any of these processes, the decision ends with you, so we'll come back to you in May for your final approval. You'll have the CDAC recommendations to consider at that time as well. And then with your final approval, staff can, we can go ahead and submit the action plan to HUD and funds can be available starting July 1. So that's the plan. If there are any questions, comments, please.
Okay, is that all, Erin?
That's all, yeah, that's all I had. Like I said, there, I'm not really, there aren't any exact questions I had. I just wanted to share the process we're proposing and.
I have a comment.
Well, okay, I'll put you in queue. Merrily, I have Counselor Steer and then Merrily, and then Sean.
So do we have any number of proposals to accept in mind, or is that going to be driven by the amount that's requested in each RFP?
Good question. It's something we've played with in the past, knowing that there is a there is staff, like cost, I guess, to monitor each of those activities, but so far, no, we do not limit the number of applications received. We just sort of threw the evaluation process by the CDAC, the state county councils, I guess, asked
So there's, obviously, there's no limit on the number of proposals we accept, but, or that we, applications we accept, but the number of proposals that we implement is also sort of up in the air based on the amount of.
Yeah, we've gotten feedback from HUD in the past that, in the past, on some of those years where we have funded maybe 12 projects at one time, we didn't have enough staff time to adequately monitor whether or not those projects were being implemented in compliance with federal regulations.
Very good.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Counselor Steer, and I have Counselor Woodrow.
Yeah, a couple of things. To clarify Leonard's question just before. In the past, when the RFPs have come in, there have been times when we have not allotted the entire amount, but have allotted a certain percentage of what they asked for. Is that still possible to do?
Yes, yes, the ultimate decision is yours, however you make it.
I just wanted to make sure that was still okay under HUD. It was still okay that if, for whatever reason, we found that we could approve something 90% of what they asked for because we wanted to put 10% over towards something else, that that's still okay under HUD. Is that, is that right?
Oh, 100%, yeah, 100%. Ideally, and this is more on a note to myself, is that through the evaluation process, that question gets asked to the applicant, what if you are not fully funded, can you still implement this project? So at least we have that information for you to then make a decision. That is part of the, yes, the application.
Exactly, and the only other thing I wanted to comment on was the consolidated plan, if anybody looks down through that left column, it was described to me, and it was probably the best way that I could think of to describe it is, it's like a menu. It has been, it has been developed under the principles that HUD and standards that HUD looks for in order for have those categories to be approved, but they are not something that has to be done. Individual cities and individual partners in the consolidated plan then select what's most appropriate for their jurisdiction. So you may see a long list there, but it's not all saying, yes, you have to go out and find a project that fits this category. It's just, it's a menu to select from as to what fits best in your community. Just to, just in case anybody needed that clarified. So that's all I want to say. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Counselor Woodrow.
Thank you, Merrily, and Sean, go ahead.
I'm good with the processes as you have it outlined here. Really, right, like CDBG funds, it's always good to see the RFPs, you know, as they come in because it's some of the more flexible funds that we have. So, you know, you can buy infrastructure or land bank with them, which is something we definitely wanted to, and wanted to get into the, you know, into the business of, if you will. I had a couple of clarifying questions. When I look at this, this is only next fiscal year, correct? So like, we still have funding that's sort of allocated from previous years that is sort of programmed that we have it to release for places like Cornerstone, right?
Correct, correct, and that is what I tried to provide context for in the council briefing memo. So that central column in the council briefing memo outlines, right, just to provide context, the next year is one-year action plan is only proposing for these few projects. However, there are still projects from this last year that we are still continuing to carry out. And that, yes, that is correct. That money carries over and that is still available to them, and it is not included in this RFP or the one-year action plan. It is, it is tied to them per your previous award.
Okay, okay, and so, and then I had questions about the home repair program and the first-time
Yes.
Down payment assistance. Those are both, those are both areas that we've identified in the past where we may not have had the right amount allocated to those, to those areas. I think one of them had too much money, one of them had not enough money.
Yes.
The way I'm reading this is that that sort of imbalance that those two programs carried the last couple of years has been corrected. Is that fair?
I think the pendulum isn't swinging as wide, yes.
Okay, but like, in the future, you may, we may have to look at it again and adjust accordingly depending on how much folks are using it.
Right, exactly, so we put that proposal of $90,000 for the home repair program based on how the first six months of this year have gone, how much we anticipate being left over starting July 1, and sort of worked backwards to say, okay, on this year, we're running at about $120,000 toward this program. If we think we'll have $30,000 left over by next June, let's only allocate $90,000. I think that the risk of over allocating some of those programs is then you don't make them available through the RFP, for example, and yet maybe there could have been another program. And how do we make sure we're not oversubscribing and just letting money sit there?
So, last question that I have is in the council briefing packet, there was a note about those problems using the down payment assistance program. Can you talk a little bit more about that?
Yeah, that is, that is a problem I know Eugene is experiencing as well. I think the housing crisis, while magnifying the need to, like, to greater assist low-income homeowners to be able to become first-time homeowners, the housing costs are rising to the point that these funds may not always be able to fill the gap between homeowner can put down and what that home is for sale. But also, where we're seeing the low end of the entry-level home in this community is also starting to be out of reach for many people that we would otherwise be trying to serve. So this question, I think it's one that we need to address outside of the allocation. I mean, let's, if there's someone who needs down payment assistance, by all means, I do think it might be a more complicated question that as we look into, how else can we support first-time homeowners? And maybe direct down payment assistance isn't the best solution, but maybe something like a community land trust is. It meets the same goal, but it actually allows us to use our funds in a way that we have better control over the market to put toward that home. So it's an idea that's there that I think we'll be coming back to you all with, but right now, we don't have the answer.
Yeah, and I would be, like, and I'm supportive particularly about those two programs of, you know, coming back and having a longer conversation about them because those are easy programs, they make a ton of sense to finance and get people into their first home, so, thank you.
Great, yep.
Thank you, Sean. Counselor, well, it's not Counselor Rodley yet, so I'm not sure. Well, I'm gonna need to look for the attorney for protocol in regards to input because you're not technically counsel yet. So, would not have that input yet. I mean, I know, I want to make sure we do things right, Steve. So. So, Mary Bridger, do you hear?
Yeah, Counselor Pictionary, this is Mary Bridget. So you're correct, Counselor-elect Rodley hasn't been sworn in yet, but she can participate, if it's all right with the council. She can ask questions or provide input in this work session. And since you're in a work session, you're not taking any official action anyway. So I appreciate you asking, but I think she's good to volunteer at the meeting.
Good, sounds good. I just, don't take me wrong, Corey. I just want to make sure we don't mess up right from the get-go, so, so, go ahead. What do you got?
Thank you. And I was thinking, I can always send it to someone, too, if it was, you know, if it was unofficial or I couldn't say anything. Because it's, it's really not necessarily any questions about the plan, but it's about a little bit around the implementation of it. And since I'm new, it's kind of a newbie question in wondering, when we talk about the RFP process, what our outreach looks like in terms of how we get that information out? And do we supply that in Spanish? And are we looking to make sure that all of that information is accessible in both languages?
That is a great question. So I don't believe we do supply it in Spanish, and we can look into that. I think that is a bigger question I'm going to look to Tom Voyada on how we do that, not just for this program, but other things. But yeah, it's a great question. Right now, we sort of have a listserv that we manage based on nonprofits and others in the past that we've worked with, but then also putting the information out to Lane County's distribution list and making it available on our website and putting a legal notice in the register guard. Those are kind of the the main outreach pieces. And then we certainly encourage people, more than just going straight to the RFP, but also available for any and all questions on how to fill it out, what we're looking for, and whether or not an idea would qualify. But yeah, I think the outreach question is a good perpetual one.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you. Anyone else? I'll just throw my comments in if I don't have anybody else. Thank you, thank you, Erin, very much. Appreciate this. I really like how this process has morphed over the years in regards to its layout and how it's presented. I really like how, in the past, where our concentration of efforts have been, and I think they're paying off, and I think we need to continue with those efforts in those areas. So I look forward to moving on with this, with this process and how it's laid out, and looking forward to our responses we get from the RFPs.
Okay, great. I will, as the timeline says, I'll be back later this spring for your final decision.
Well, thanks for the warning. All right.
Thanks.
Thank you very much, Erin. You do great. Okay, our next item. Do we even have another item?
We don't.
No, so I will go ahead and adjourn this work session, and we'll see all of you back in about 41 minutes for the regular session. All right, take care. Do we, Amy, do we need, do we actually leave this meeting and come back to the same one?
Uh, yes, you are welcome to leave and come back into the same one. If we have any trouble, you all have to.
All right. Thank you.
Hey, AJ, can we also stay logged in if we want to?
Yes, sir, you may. I would just recommend muting your microphone and turning your camera off.
Good idea.
You can sing for 40 minutes.
I I know Sweet Adeline, I can just, all right. Just us so far. I'm going to, I'm going to mute because I'm apparently picking up some ambient noise from the building here.
I just want to know how much ambient noise is in the union hall. Like, it's, it's always some serious, it's serious background noise.
It's usually ambient noise from the members.
Touche. Did you get anything good for Christmas, Leonard?
I'm sorry, say again?
Did you get anything good for Christmas? Did you?
Yeah. I got, I, I, I got an extremely, an extremely loud stream of invective from many members over the Christmas holiday. That was my, that was my present.
I don't miss peak season at UPS.
There was, it was mostly from people who were your ex-employers, as a matter of fact.
Well, blame me. That's what you used to be able to do.
That, that, that's, that was my plan, but they didn't let me do that. They said you, they said you'd been gone for too long.
There, the weird thing is, I'm starting to see people that I don't know who they are, right? So.
Uh huh. Yeah.
That's all, that's all, considering the sort of length of time that I spent there, right? It's like. Followed by those youngins.
How long were you there, Sean?
Ooh, maybe seventeen. Not insignificant amount of time in my life.
Are you ready for this craziness, Cory?
I think so. I'm as ready as I'm ever gonna be.
There you go.
I feel like we should invite the public to our, you know, our, our pre, our pre-session stand-up comedy routine. Maybe they realize how much of a talent we got.
There you go. There's only one thing missing, Leonard.
Yeah, the members tell me I'm missing those two.
Hey, Joe.
Hello, stranger, person I can't see, ghost person. Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call to order this Springfield City Council meeting with roll call.
Counselor Van Gordon.
Here.
Counselor Mo.
Here.
Counselor-elect Rodley.
Here.
Counselor Stare.
Here.
Counselor Woodrow.
Here.
And Counselor Pictionary.
Here. Thank you, Neil. Let's go ahead and start with the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. I'll go ahead and read some instructions for the public. As we begin our meeting tonight, I would like to ask members of the audience who are joining us online to please keep yourselves on mute until you're called to provide public testimony. There is one time this evening designated for public testimony and will be listed as business from the audience on the agenda. If you are joining us online with a tablet, smartphone, or computer and wish to speak either of those, at that time, please use the chat window. It looks like the speech balloon on the upper right corner. Please send a comment to the organizer with your name, ward, or general location, and a subject you would like to speak about. You can select the organizer at the bottom of the chat window. I will call upon you when it is your turn to speak. For people calling in by phone only, you are in listen mode only and cannot be called upon. The order of public testimony is as follows. Anyone who has submitted a chat, and then anyone who has submitted email in advance, and if there's time, Neil will read those into the record. So, here we go. Springfield upbeat. Go ahead, Neil. I'm sorry, go ahead.
Also, the first item is Business from the City Attorney, one item, Springfield Councilmember's oath of office, and Mary Bridget Smith is here for this item.
Good evening, councilors. I'm here to walk you through the oath of office for new counselor-elect Rodley and two other counselors. Can you hear me?
Can hear you fine.
Great. Alright, and so just by way of introduction, our charter requires that elected officials take an oath of office. The wording of the office comes, of the oath rather, comes from the charter. Tonight, we will be swearing in Counselor-elect Rodley for Ward Three, and then Counselor Stare for Ward Four, and Counselor Pictionary for Ward Six. Typically, I have done a back and forth with counselors, but I think that might be more complicated with the virtual environment. So what I would recommend is that each counselor read out loud the oath that is on the AIS. I thought we would start with Counsel Rodney, Rodley, in Ward Three, and then move on to Ward Four with Counsel Stare, and then Counsel Pictionary, and Ward Six, unless anyone else has any other questions.
Sounds good to me.
Okay. Counselor Rodley, do you, can you see the oath, or do you have it handy there?
I can see it.
Okay, so if you wouldn't mind raising your right hand, and then inserting your name in the oath and going ahead and reading that out loud, please.
I, Cory Rodley, do solemnly affirm that I will support the Constitution of the United States and of this state, and that I will, to the best of my ability, faithfully perform the duties of city counselor of the City of Springfield, Oregon during my continuance therein.
Wonderful. Congratulations. If we were in person, I'd be shaking your hand right now.
Thank you.
We got one.
Alright, and next, Counselor Stare.
Can, can I just say this is going a lot more smoothly than it usually does?
I agree. I think this might be the way to go, moving forward.
Alright. I, Leonard Stare, do solemnly affirm that I will support the Constitution of the United States and of this state, and that I will, to the best of my ability, faithfully perform the duties of city counselor of the City of Springfield, Oregon during my continuance therein.
Wonderful. Thank you and congratulations. And Counselor Pictionary for Ward Six.
Thank you. I, Joe Pictionary, do solemnly affirm that I will support the Constitution of the United States and of this state, and that I will, to the best of my ability, faithfully perform the duties of city counselor of the City of Springfield, Oregon during my continuance therein.
Wonderful. Thank you and congratulations. And that's all I have for this item.
Thank you, Mary Bridget. Next item, Neil.
Next item and congratulations is the consent calendar.
I move that we approve the consent calendar.
I second.
It's been moved and seconded. I will do a roll call vote, Neil.
Counselor Van Gordon.
Yes.
Counselor Mo.
Yes.
Counselor Rodley.
Yes.
Counselor Stare.
Yes.
Counselor Woodrow.
Yes.
And Counselor Pictionary.
Yes, thank you, Neil. It carries with unanimous vote. Next item.
The next item is, you have no public hearings this evening, so your next item is Business from the Audience. We do have several speakers. Your first speaker is Mike Easter, and, Mike?
And I think we went, we, we changed the process and looked at it was based on the amount of people wishing to speak to two minutes each, so that way we can maximize the amount of speakers, as opposed to limiting it to three minutes each and twenty minutes total.
Counselor Pictionary, this is Mary Bridget. The council can do that if you have a lot of speakers tonight, and you wanna make sure to hear from everybody. That should be either consensus or a motion and vote by the council before you move forward with that.
Well, let's see how many we have to speak.
Here's we have about ten, Counselor Pictionary.
So that's, that's gonna pretty much need necessitate a shorter period of time each, so we can get everybody in. Do we, or at least in my mind, do I have a concurrence with the council, please?
Actually, I would.
I, I didn't hear Sean because of the noise. Go ahead and speak.
Um, I, I said I would be comfortable giving them the additional time. If we've got ten people, we're going to spend, in theory, to, until thirty minutes, and it's a pretty light agenda, so, like, I don't see any reason to sort of rush through this.
Okay. Go ahead, Counsel Stare, and then Counsel Rodley.
I, I agree with Counselor Van Gort.
I'm, I'm just gonna be the third to say I agree as well to giving folks, starting out the year, giving people the maximum time.
And I also see Counsel Mo waving, nodding his head and waving.
Yes.
I, I don't disagree. I just thought it would be necessary to bring it up because it's been a problem in the past, so I wanna make sure everybody is happy, which is impossible. So, we'll go ahead and go with the first speaker, Neil, and we'll go with three minutes each. Thank you.
Yes, Counselor Pictionary, the first speaker is Mike Easter, and, Mike, if you unmute your microphone on your side. That work? We can hear you.
Thank you. My name is Mike Easter, and I live in Ward Two. Happy New Year to all of you, and thank you for your work on behalf of Springfield, and welcome, Counselor Rodley. My statement tonight is my own personal statement and doesn't represent the position of any of the, any of the boards on which I serve. I'm here tonight to talk about the need for a charter amendment. Regardless of how good a job an acting mayor or an appointed mayor do, the citizens of Springfield deserve to have an elected mayor. Everyone understands the need to have a provision for an acting mayor in the event that the elected mayor may have to miss a meeting or two. However, because of the way our current charter is written, Springfield has not had an elected mayor for nearly five months. Further, we're about to enter into a period of two more years without having an elected mayor. Two and a half years is simply too long for Springfield to not have an elected mayor. Fortunately, the solution to this problem is simple. The required amendment is straightforward. This council has the authority to place a charter amendment on the ballot that would prevent this from occurring in Springfield again. I'm aware that some have proposed a comprehensive review of the charter, suggesting that council wait and incorporate this amendment into a comprehensive review. However, we all know how easy it is for something like a comprehensive review of a city charter to stretch out into the indefinite future. For that reason, I'm asking the council to make the simple amendment to the charter that would prevent an extended period of time for the mayor position to be occupied by an unelected acting mayor. This would be simple, straightforward, and could be done relatively quickly. I've also heard comment that a charter amendment should not be placed on the ballot for a single issue. I believe the City of Springfield has placed charter amendments on the ballot for single issues in the past, and there is no reason it could not be done now to ensure that the citizens of Springfield never again have to go two and a half years without having an elected mayor. Thank you for your consideration. AJ, I've sent a copy of this statement to you and asked that it be incorporated into the record for this meeting. Thanks.
Thank you, Michael, and next speaker, please.
Our next speaker is Chris McAllister.
Good evening, councilors. My name is Chris McAllister, and I live in Ward Three. First, I'd like to thank and congratulate Counsel Rodley on winning Ward Three. I look forward to seeing many projects and some revitalization efforts coming through to try and make sure that our word is represented as much as Gateway and Glenwood are in some of our works. And I know that you are a voice who is one who will listen and also speak truth, so thank you for taking the seat. Secondly, I would like to thank the City of Springfield for being here for our unhoused folks during this winter, where in years past, we have not had as many options to be able to try and problem-solve in ways that mean something to both the community and those being served. We've been able to take what has happened with COVID and turn it into a positive. We've been able to see people taken care of, offered shelter on the coldest days, and when COVID has closed down doors, Springfield has opened them. So I wanna give my heartfelt thanks in saying that it doesn't stop here. We are in a new year. We have a lot of things to move forward on. And if we want to be net zero with homelessness, as we have, as a community, said that we would be participating in, we have to look at the fixes that are not easy, the non-utilitarian fixes, the ones that take into consideration the hardest to help, and help map out and chart out a future for all Springfielders, regardless of where we came from, regardless of where we're going. We all deserve to have a voice. And so I also want to thank the councilors for moving to continue the three-minute limit for all of our people. And I also wanted to echo that while I understand the need to get an answer for our mayor is soon and necessary, that at some point soon, that we should restore democracy back to our process. As the national scene looks at discounting votes, we need to make sure that we hear our people on the local level, and that our voices are not drowned out. We are not red, we are not blue, we are not purple, we are Springfield. Thank you for your time and your service.
Thank you, Chris. Next speaker, Neil, when you're ready.
Our next speaker is Samuel Benjamin.
Can you hear me? Yes, we can hear you, Samuel. Awesome. Good evening. My name is Samuel Benjamin. I live in Ward Two. I am a new Springfield resident, and since moving here about a year ago, I've been very disappointed by how the city operates, particularly in regards to the democratic process. When I heard our mayor was resigning, I was shocked to hear that there would not be a special election called, which is a pretty standard democratic process. I understand that the rules governing the city do not allow for special election currently, but it is also the job of the city to engage in self-reflection and understand when it is time to change the rules. I truly think the city needs to consider adding in special elections for both mayor and council for any future vacancies. In order to enhance public trust and democracy, the citizens of Springfield need to speak for themselves and not have a limited group of just six individuals make this decision on their behalf. Thank you for your time. I yield the rest of mine.
Thank you, Sam. Next person, when you're ready, Neil.
The next speaker is Lauren Williams.
Lauren, you should be able to unmute your microphone. There you go.
Everyone hear me?
Yes.
Hi. Good evening. My name is Lauren Williams. I live in Ward Two. I wanted to say a quick Happy New Year. In such a challenging year, I hope you all had restful and joy-filled holidays. I spent mine reflecting on last year's meeting, meetings, plural, and I have a few things I'd like to address as we move into the new year. First, I'd like to see you take all public comment without shortening our time. You represent us, and to do so, you need to hear what we have to say. Counselor Pictionary said on more than one occasion last year that he would allow extra comments, but that he thought if council had rules, they needed to be adhered to, meaning the public needed to stay within our allotted twenty minutes. Tonight was another example of that, so I'd like you to make new rules. Please expand the allotted time for comment, or as a rule, take all of our comments. Second, I heard the sentiment multiple times from council, council that you're just volunteers. I would like you to know that I'm also unpaid to be here, and I'm not compensated for attending meetings or doing research on topics discussed. You all ran for your response, your positions, and asked for the responsibilities you have. So please, moving forward, let's have the mutual understanding and respect for each other's time, commitment, and concern. Third, I'd like to address sentiments made by Chief Lewis in various interviews last year minimizing incidents and suggesting that everything in Springfield was great, that the current unrest and frustration stems from things happening far away and do not really apply here. However, the lawsuits of Barone, Barone, Stone, Umanhofer, McKee, Kenny, Chaplin, and Beechman were all filed prior to the murder of George Floyd. Things have not been great here. They've been problematic for a while, and we've been asking for change for a while. All of that said, I think your work matters more than ever. I'm so hopeful that 2021 will be a year of rebuilding with care for those who are most vulnerable. I'm really looking forward to hearing your thoughts about. I'm really looking forward to hearing your thoughts about reform and to see the changes you make this year. I want to sincerely thank you for your time and welcome Counselor Rodley. Thank you. I yield my time.
Thank you, Lauren. And next speaker, Neil, when you're ready.
Our next speaker is Holly Shaper. And Holly, let me just get to your microphone. You should be ready.
All right. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay. My name is Holly Shaper, and I live in Ward Two. Good evening and Happy New Year, councilors, and welcome, Counselor Rodley. It is now January 4th, 2021, and we still don't have a mayor leading Springfield. This means that we have been without a mayor for nearly five months. During this time, there's been public comment given about all of the challenges we are facing, including a global pandemic, economic freefall, continuing housing issues, horrifying wildfires, civil unrest, and calls for real police accountability. However, without a mayor, there's no leadership or direction for the city to tackle these important challenges. More importantly, we have been wasting time listening to council rehash why they must appoint one of their own rather than beginning to craft and debate policies to address these challenges. What makes this all the more disappointing is that we did not have to take this path with a lack of leadership. This was a council decision devoid of consideration of any external input, of which there was plenty, including countless emails and a petition. Beyond being simply disappointing and rather embarrassing, it shows some clear flaws in the system and a failure of process. Why are elected offices allowed to go unfilled for nearly half of a year? Why are the residents of Springfield explicitly excluded from helping to elect their representatives in the event of a vacancy? Why do we not operate in the way other cities in our area do? Do we really find it acceptable that offices can be vacated midterm and result in long-term appointments, which then roll into incumbent elections? Given the significant outcry from Springfield residents pleading for a voice in these appointments, I think the answer to these questions is no. We do not find this acceptable. So let's change course and enact a new plan. Let's change the city charter on the May 2021 ballot and allow for elections when vacancies occur. Let's work together to close the loophole that allows for long-term appointments and instead open it up to elections so that people can hear the platform of each candidate, how they would solve the challenges that have been articulated in public comment and other discussions, and then allow them to make an informed decision. Don't choose to wait because government moves slowly. Choose to prioritize this and show us that you are really listening to your constituents. Let us vote for our leadership in the future. Again, move forward immediately with a charter amendment on the May ballot. Put democracy back in the hands of Springfield residents. Listen to your constituents and give them the agency they deserve. Thank you.
Thank you, Holly. Next person, when you're ready, Neil.
Our next speaker is Elizabeth Utterbeck. And just a moment here. Sorry, my fault on that. Elizabeth, your microphone should be ready.
Okay. Thank you, Neil. Good evening, councilors. This is Lizzie Utterback from Ward Three. With the new year finally here, I am hopeful for changes in our city that will lead to justice and equity. I see small glimmers of hope from this evening's work session, when I think for the first time ever, I saw pronouns listed alongside a counselor's name. And then I heard Counselor Rodley inquire about materials being available in Spanish. This is fantastic. Earlier this week, I was also encouraged to see that all of the candidates for the mayoral appointment support police reform, as quoted in Eugene Weekly article published on New Year's Eve. I have seen the community led by Black Unity and BIPOC activists drive this conversation about police oversight in our neighborhoods, in council, and at the Police Advisory Committee meetings. Contrary to white, contrary to right-wing propaganda, we are community members. Many of us actually live in Springfield. We do this work in the community and here at these meetings with volunteers. We do this work and manage jobs, families, spotty Wi-Fi, and personal tragedies, just like the rest of you. It is heartening to see the city councils, our elected officials respond to these requests and calls for police accountability as you are at the top of the food chain. However, I have also seen you limit opportunity for public comment, not tonight, luckily, but granted, it was said this evening that having a lot of public comment has been a problem. At previous meetings, I've seen you cut down the allotted time for community members to speak. I have sent numerous emails to council that went unanswered. A committee from my church that lives our religious values by challenging racism wrote an op-ed seeking police accountability in Springfield that was published in the Eugene Weekly on October 8, 2020. This letter was also an email to you, and it also went unanswered. I've heard from others during public comment periods who explain that their complaints made to SPD also went unanswered. When our emails aren't responded to and our complaints aren't responded to, we have no way of knowing if they are read or taken seriously. I'm telling you this because I see the necessity of elected officials hearing from their constituents in these public meetings. Since it seems email is not an effective way to reach you, it is even more important for us to be able to speak in these settings. Like others have requested tonight, I'm asking that you increase the allotted time for public comment at city council meetings whenever needed, regardless of whether you have a heavy or light agenda moving forward. So every community member who volunteers their time to participate in governance will be heard. Thank you.
Thank you. Next person, when you're ready, Neil.
Our next speaker is Carla Berg. And Carla, you are ready to go.
Hello, council. Thank you for giving me this time. I will be presenting the Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisory Committee end-of-year report. I will try to make it as quick as possible. You should have all received this. I just want to go over the highlights. We did create a letter that will go that you all got regarding the West East Street project. Originally, we had come up with some suggestion and, and ideas, but as a group, we decided that we were not, we did not have consensus. And so we would like to continue talking about solutions for that with your help. We, with your help and based on suggestions from 2019, we did add sharrows and wayfinding to Fourth Street off of Broadway so that people could be routed off of Fifth in getting, getting close to downtown. There was an ODOT funding that will do some crosswalk enhancements, and we're working on an intergovernmental agreement that you'll be asked to assist with. And that also includes some of the crosswalk stuff around 14th and Main. A pedestrian network inventoried the sidewalks in Springfield along with city staff. There is about 25% complete. In previous years, we had done really big light giveaways for people who were pedestrians or bicyclists for both, for different kinds of lights. This year, due to COVID, we weren't able to do as many, but we were able to partner with some local organizations so that we got them the lights and they were able to hand them out to people who needed them. And then the last thing is the Metro Policy Committee approved funding for some bike racks and bike fixing stations in Springfield. The BPAC Committee is suggesting that we put two instead of three of the bike fixing stations. So then use the rest of the funding to keep those in good repair. There, we are suggesting that two of either, of any of these three, either at the Springfield Downtown Bus Station, Gateway Station, or the Springfield Justice Station. That's all I have. Thank you all for everything you do.
Well, thank you, Carla. I appreciate that. I appreciate the report and look forward to reading that. Thanks for coming in.
Counselor, our next speaker is Jay Smith. I believe that's Jennifer Smith, followed by Benjamin Wilkinson.
Thank you.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can, Ms. Smith. Thank you.
Hello. Thank you. Yes, you're right. This is Jennifer Smith. I wanted to say that I saw the Eugene Weekly article, and I just wanted to thank Counselor Van Gordon and Counselor Steer, who are both, as I understand, interested in becoming the next mayor of Springfield. And as stated by a previous commenter, both favoring police reform. It really means a lot to us a, as a community that, as we've been coming and speaking for, you know, several months now, that we do feel that, that there is some, some listening happening. So I just very much appreciate that. Also appreciate Counselor Steer raising the topic of gentrification and lack of affordable housing in Springfield. These are issues that very much affect our community. I also want to echo previous commenters' praise for this council in taking action to help with the unhoused population and other marginalized populations. It is, it's sad that it took COVID to get us to this place, but I, I still appreciate that action is being taken there and that we're making improvements there. I did have a few questions, and I don't know if you'll be able to respond on these, but I'm curious about Rick Brazil's report, if it's still on track to be completed by January 31st. This is on the use of force and July 29th, Thurston, Black Unity protest incident. I'm curious what form the report will take. Are there going to be any meetings with the community to share the results? Any room for feedback? I'm also curious, I know, I think at the last council meeting, it was mentioned that there were still plans to have a Blue Ribbon Committee investigate this situation outside of, sort of from, I assume from a community perspective as opposed to from a law enforcement perspective. So that's just something I wanted to ask about if we're still planning on doing that. I also just wanted to express concerns over Chief Lewis's statements made at the Springfield City Club where, I mean, he works for you guys, right? City manager works for you. He works for city manager. He's stating that everything is fine with policing in Springfield, like quite publicly trivializing the Kenny lawsuit. Yeah, this is a lawsuit that received national news. And it's just some of the statements made, a statement made about how dishonesty is a big deal. It gets you Brady listed. It's career-ending. Why did SPD fight to retain Ryan Stone, a Brady-listed officer, while working to fire Scott McKee, the officer who investigated him? Looks like my time's up. Thank you.
Thank you, Jennifer. Our next speaker, Neil.
Counselor, our last speaker that we have in the queue is Benjamin Wilkinson. And Benjamin, you should be ready to go.
Thank you so much, AJ. Thank you, council. I, I have to say that in 2020, I have purchased a home and closed a business more than once in Springfield. And I, I will say, hopefully, we will reopen in this new year, but it's, it's been fascinating for me to be a part of this small community now, both officially as a business owner and a resident. And I'm heartened to show up in a city council meeting on a Monday evening at 7:30 and to hear such enthusiastic voices commenting on our civic process. If 2020 taught me anything, it's that we need more engagement in this thing that we call democracy in our community at every level, and that we need to find more ways to reinforce the idea that every vote counts and every vote matters. Now, I haven't gone to the lengths to prepare such eloquent statements as my, as fellow residents here have this evening. But like I said, I echo their sentiments, and I just am excited to hear that we have that sort of vociferous support for processes that involve more parties, especially those who might be aggrieved or underrepresented, who might not have the wherewithal to speak for themselves in situations such as this. I can figure out, go to meeting barely, and that's why I'm late and probably why I'm at the end of the queue, but not everybody can. We've all come a long way in 2020 in our, in our e-learning. I'm working on some stuff myself. I'm excited that we'll grow out of Springfield and the downtown business community, and the support from the city has been great. That's all coming up. But I think it's critical that at the most visible way possible, we have a democracy that reflects the will of the voters, even when circumstances that we can't account for and prepare for come up, such as the vacancy in our mayor's office. We certainly wouldn't plan to have an election and then need to have another election a few months later, you know, but we need to put into place practices that allow our voices to be heard even in these difficult circumstances. So I would encourage you to adopt an amendment to the charter that allows for a vote when we have vacancies such as these. And then in the future, would it be a council vacancy, a mayoral vacancy, or other important roles in our city that we would have similar elections? So I think that's my thoughts. It's nice to see your faces. I think I met a few of you in person. I look forward to running into you again when it is safe to do so. Thank you, AJ. I yield my time.
Thank you, Benjamin. Neil, do we have any more in queue?
Those are our speakers for this evening.
Okay. Thank you very much. Thank you to the public. I appreciate all of your comments and concerns. Next item, Neil.
The next item is any council response to business from the audience.
Sean, go ahead.
Actually, actually, I did have one question. I've heard this come up a couple of times in both emails and sort of in public, public comments. Is there a way to get how many police complaints that we still actually have open? Is it in the, maybe in the SPAC meetings? Like I keep hearing people say that they're filing complaints and they're not getting resolved, or they're still open. Maybe that's a question for Nancy or Neil or Chief Lewis or somebody.
Well, they're not, those, the numbers are not shared in SPAC.
Um, so can we know how many are still open?
Counselor Van Gordon, I believe Chief Lewis is here. Chief Lewis, are you available? I think you might need to unmute your microphone. He may be having some issues with his microphone, but we can get that information.
Yeah, and I, and I would be fine seeing it in a, in a council briefing memorandum if, if it's not available. I'm just trying to get, I'm hearing one thing from the public. I'm just trying to sort of get context of, you know, it's going to take time to look at these. I totally understand, but like, you know, are we, are we actually getting the complaints and sort of, are they getting resolved or are they staying open and for any given time? And then the second question that I had that I think came up is what, can we get maybe an update on the Rick Brazil report?
Counselor Van Gordon, this is Nancy. I can certainly provide you an update, and I also would like to ask, before I do that, just a clarifying question. The outstanding complaints that you're referring to, are these, are you referring to complaints against our police department? Or are you referring to incidents arising from the Thurston protest?
I'm just talking about complaints. I think I'm just asking about complaints in general, right? Like, so here's what, like, when I hear the public speak, I, I hear them say, okay, we filed a complaint, and then we're not sure anything is resolved. I'm not as concerned specifically about Thurston. I think that's probably going to get resolved for information for you from the, from the Rick Brazil report. But I'm just trying to get my head around when, when complaints happen, are they getting looked at? Are they getting closed? And then how are we communicating back to the person that filed them that this has actually been addressed?
Okay, got it. As far as the Rick Brazil report, I received an email from him today, an update email. And he has been actively still working on this project. We, after the community forum, he received quite a large number of correspondence from, from, from different individuals. Some sent just emails. Some people sent additional video coverage. So he, he is over 350 So he is over 350 video clips that he is looking at, just to give you an idea of the scope and scale of what he has received. Nobody's also looking into, he's also conducted some some phone interviews with some of our our police departments. I'm, we're still targeting a January, end of January deadline for a report from Mr. Brazil. I plan to have a meeting with him either this week or next to finalize what that might look like, what the council could expect to see, and then we'll be in communication with council about how we would like to move that forward.
Okay, I appreciate it. And then one final comment, and then I'll toss it back to Joe. I know that there's a lot of concern, questions, comments and feedback about the whole mayor conver, like the entire mayor conversation. I just heard, like, one of the things I've heard a couple of times is that somehow our language and our charters are different than the vast majority of cities in Oregon. It's pretty in line. I know that this is a real question, got to work through it and talk through it, but I don't know that it's necessarily our language is different than what everybody else in the world is actually doing. It's my understanding it's pretty in line with what they're doing. Still a real issue, still means we kind of have to figure it out and talk about it, but I wanted to.
Okay, thank you, Sean. Is that it? I have Counselor Rodley, followed by Counselor Stir.
I think Counselor Stir was first, but I'm gonna just mea culpa since you called my name first. So all I really want to do is express appreciation as someone who has sat in the dark for a couple of years and watched these meetings and listened to a person after person testify during the public hearings, I just want to thank all of you for that time and consideration and passion and commitment to democracy and say that I appreciate it deeply and will continue to, so please don't stop. Whether you're doing it out loud at a city council meeting or you're sending emails or you're reaching out in other ways, I just have a very deep and forever appreciation for that because I feel the more folks that get involved, the more democratic the process and the more we can together build the Springfield that we want to say, see. So thank you.
Counselor Stir.
Thanks, Joe. Well, since since Counselor Van Gordon brought up the issue of the charter amendment, I would say I don't know exactly what the provisions are in other charters across the state, but if there is no provision for a special election in circumstances like this, then I think that's a problem for everybody. I think that there should be a democratic solution that should be sought for a two-year term. And I agree completely with the speakers who were speaking in favor of a charter amendment.
Joe?
Yes, ma'am. I was wondering if you had your hands up.
I did, I did. Yes, I had a couple of things. I think that a future discussion and conversation regarding how that amendment or how the charter situation could could happen is definitely on the table. I think it's something that we need to address. And the other thing, though, is I wonder if Mary Bridgett might be able to review the timeline that we are committed to in regards to the mayoral appointment and that because I think I think there may be some misunderstandings as far as the restrictions that we are under momentarily. And I think Mary Bridgett can probably explain it better than anyone else, but yes, and I do, I agree. I think it needs to be addressed. The amendment or the charter needs to, the amendment to the charter needs to be addressed and at a future conversation, not not 10 years out, but upcoming conversation.
Thank you, Merrily, and I have Counselor Mo.
I agree with us going ahead and doing a charter amendment, addressing problems we have right now. We didn't see it coming here now, so let's let's address the charter and fix it and then continue on. Thank you.
Okay, and back to Counselor Van Gordon.
I'm open to taking more information and having the conversation about it. I don't know what, you know, what fixing it might look like, but I think it's valuable to have a conversation and make an active, sort of an active choice whether or not we want to do this for something that the voters are like, hey, we're fine where we're where we're at, but at least we need to look at it. You know, and I don't have the timeline to have that and have that conversation.
Okay, well, it looks to me as though the majority of the council and including myself, that we need to look at the charter and see instead of putting it on a burner set at two, let's go ahead and crank the burner up just a little bit and see where we can go. And that would be pretty much marching orders for Mary Bridgett and Nancy for us to set a course as to what that might look at like and what kind of timelines and what the ramifications are, because there will be ramifications. We have need to look at all of it before we get too fast on this, but we need to look at it and make sure we do it right and see where the council's at. So from that, I guess that's marching order for you, Mary Bridgett and Nancy from the council.
This is Nancy. Yes, we we hear you loud and clear. We can schedule this for a for a future council meeting, not not in the distant future, but in the near future. I will say, you know, I want to give our city attorney some time to do some research and she and myself to provide you with some options that you consider just as a starting point for a discussion. I think it's always helpful if you have something to reference rather than just a blank slate of what do you think we should do so we can have a thoughtful conversation. And so we can, we can queue that up for you and then go from, see where that takes us.
And and also, I'd like to throw in there, too, is if we can make, reach out to League of Cities, LFC, Organ League of Cities, to get some input from them and see what cities of various sizes are doing and why they're doing it and why they've chosen to remain where they're at or not change, or ones that have changed and why they did change. So we can, so we get a good full report.
Excellent idea. We will do that. Thank you.
All right. Anyone else for comment? Merrily, you're still in the dark, so I can't see a holler at me.
Nope, I'm good. I would like Mary Bridgett, though, to address the timeline that we've been through in the last six months.
Sure. Okay. Go ahead, Mary Bridgett.
Sure. So Counselor Woodrow, just in response to your question, Counselor, Mayor Lumber's resignation was at a time, an unusual time in that it was at the end of one term and then she had just recently been reelected for a new term. And the thing that is complicated is that a council can't deal with the new term till they get to the new term. So it would have been premature to try and appoint an interim mayor earlier. And so that is why we've had to wait, but that is also why the council and the charter has a provision where the council president can act as the function as the mayor when the mayor is absent. And then you also appointed a council president pro temp to assist. So I think that business has been moving forward here at the city and it was just the timing that made it difficult. But now that we're in the new term, we have a schedule set up for the council to move forward with appointing an interim mayor at your meeting after Martin Luther King Day on the 19th.
Thank you.
Okay. That part of the meeting is concluded, I believe. Next item.
Your next item is business from the city council. Item number one, city council president appointment and city manager Nancy Newton has this item.
Good evening, councilors. According to the charter for the city is the responsibility of the council to appoint a president after the president has served the two-year term. Counselor Pictionary has been ably performing that role for the last couple of years and now we are at the point where we need to look at, we're changing the guard, so to speak. I will say, I'll give some context. I am aware that we have a discussion forthcoming about a filling a potentially filling a mayor vacancy on the board. And I would, I would say that any council member could be considered for this role as council president. So if council members are interested in having this role, Counselor Van Gordon, Counselor Stir had previously expressed that, and I believe Counselor Pictionary you had as well and then decided kind of opted out, but irrespective, if you are interested, I wouldn't have that preclude you from being appointed tonight because even if we did have to, you know, fill a vacancy for among the council, we can all always revisit that in a couple weeks. An alternative would be you could do a, well, I think I'll leave it there and just kind of open it up for your comments and questions.
Anyone with comments or questions? I have Leonard Stir.
Yeah, I'm comfortable with moving forward on a presidential, president of the council vacancy. I mean, addressing vacancy or naming a new one. I I recognize that there's no obligation for somebody who's running from the mayoral vacancy to exempt themselves from the election and that's fine.
Thank you, Leonard. Any other comments, questions? Motion?
I had a question. I'm not sure, I mean, I, I don't want to be considered for president, council president, so I would just want to lay that out there. I would like, I, in the same breath, I would like to say that I would like to continue, if possible, Chair of the Economic Development Agency. I'd like to, now that I got my teeth in there, I'd like to continue to help guide that. So I want to pull myself back from any consideration for council president. I do have a logistical question that, and that is, I'm council president pro temp at the moment. Does that carry through to the appointment of the mayor or is that done as of tonight? I have no idea.
Counselor Woodrow, I can answer that question for you. When the council appointed you to be council president pro temp, that ran until this meeting tonight or until an interim mayor was appointed, whatever came first. And so it actually effectively ends tonight.
Okay, that's fine. I didn't know, I didn't know what the course of that was, so that works, that's fine.
So, thank you. That was a good question, Merrily. So I'm just wondering if, if instead of, unless there's a person that is that really is excited about being council president for this week, you know, until the new mayor is there or if, you know, until we're more on solid ground, if we have a problem with moving forward as is until a following meeting or a mayor appointment is made. I see Counselor Stir's got his hand up. Go ahead.
I've actually got a nomination if we're, if we're going to move ahead.
Well, if you have one, I think we have to accept it.
Okay. That being the case, I'd like to nominate Counselor Mo for the position of council president.
I second.
Okay. Your speaker is off.
I accept, I think. Am I on?
Yeah, you're on.
I'm honored to be considered.
This requires a vote and so if we can go with the roll call vote, Neil?
Yes, Counselor Van Gordon.
Yes.
Counselor Mo.
Can I vote for myself? Yes.
Okay. Counselor Rodley.
Yes.
Yes.
Counselor Woodrow?
Yes.
And Counselor Pictionary?
You bet.
Thank you so much.
So that action has been taken. We have a new council president, Steve Mo. Which throws me into a quandary. What am I? Leonard, can you turn your mic up? Mary Bridgett?
Yeah, you are the, you've just been sworn in for your new term as city counselor and your term as council president has just finished and Counselor Mo starts his term as council president.
Okay, so Steve, I will send you a list of meetings you'll need to attend.
Okay, you're fired.
Huh? Yeah, like I said, I will send you a list of meetings you will need to attend now. Okay. That is, that's Steve, or I mean, Sean, go ahead.
Um, I'm comfortable with Merrily continuing to like attend and represent the council so that we got two people going until, that sounds like the 18th or the 19th, whatever the meeting is. So I guess I move Merrily continues as council president pro temp until the new mayor is selected on, I don't know, the 19th or whatever it's scheduled.
Okay.
I will second that.
Okay.
Thank you.
So all those in favor, by signify to Neil on a roll call vote.
Counselor Van Gordon?
Yes.
Counselor Mo?
Yes.
Counselor Rodley?
Yes.
Counselor Stir?
Yes.
Counselor Woodrow?
Yes, and thank you. I wasn't expecting that at all.
And Counselor Pictionary?
Yes. Okay, so I'm handing the meeting over to Steve, taking over.
Okay, what do we have?
The next item, council, is any other business from the council.
Okay. Any other business from the council? I can't, I can't read down here, so I have to look over my computer over here. Business from the council committee reports.
Cory had her hand up.
I changed my mind.
Okay.
Anybody else? All right, well.
I'd like to welcome Cory aboard.
Yeah.
I confirm.
Yes.
Then now I have to speak. I want to say thank you to all of you and I want to say how grateful I am to all of the voters and the the residents of Springfield and who put me here. And I have this deep gratefulness also for the hardworking and dedicated staff at the city and look forward to working with all of you. So thank you and thank you.
Let's see. Business from the council, other business, anything there? Then we'll go on to business from the city manager.
Thank you. No further business this evening, council.
Business from the city attorney.
No further business. Thank you.
I guess we're ready to adjourn. So adjourn the meeting.
Thanks, Steve.
Thank you, everybody. Very much.